Thank you, everyone. We can start the finance meeting and then at 6:30 the Capital Facilities Committee will be joining us. Present are committee members Bob Cotton and Brenda Hastings. Absent is committee member Kate West. Also in attendance are Board President Jim Richards and Board Member David Parker and Superintendent Murphy, Business Manager Dunn, and Facilities Director Matt Cashman. And I think the first item on our agenda is the Deerfield contract, which Mr. Richards and I served on the committee to help negotiate. And Jack can walk you through it. I do think at the end of the day, it was a good agreement for both of us and a good faith effort to keep Deerfield students in school here, but also recognize that we needed contributions for that for our taxpayers.
So I'm going to walk you through it.
You're going to walk me through it?
Yep. So if you take a look at your contract, this is a tentative agreement. I have heard from Superintendent in-
Hold on a second. This is on the agenda, it's non-public.
But it-
It isn't, yeah.
It does not have to be.
Okay, great.
It does not have to be, yeah. We cleaned up the agenda a little bit, so you should see a new agenda. We do not have to have non-public for this. And the reason for that is, is that the folks in Deerfield, the board members who participated in the negotiations, reported out to the community. They will be meeting publicly again with the community in two weeks to get input. And I talked to the superintendent and indicated that Jack and I would be happy, and the high school principal would be happy to attend their meeting and provide any information. And they said they were in good places, but if they needed us, they'd give us a call. So if I could take a minute just to go over a highlight, the salient points of the contract, if you've noticed on page two, it's really the length of the contract. As you know, the contract will expire in June of 2024. This contract was negotiated to be a 20-year contract with a break at year 12 to look at it, to see if any things have changed, and then to finalize it in the year 2044. So I think that's an excellent part of this contract, for the reason is that you can plan now. You know you're going to have those students with you. Those students will, providing the Deerfield community supports that contract, but you'll know the numbers. You'll be able to plan better, especially as it relates to classes and various programs that you have at the high school. So that's a plus. Any thoughts, any questions on that?
I think you answered, not on that part. I was thinking-
Yeah, I'm going to go-
Tuition rate, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if we go-
Can I just ask a question on the term though? I also see June 2036, so will it be reviewed again at that point? Is that the end?
Well, it's at the end of 12 years.
Yeah.
So there's like a window that the contract, we will sit with them. If they have any concerns, we can sit with them and discuss it at year 2036, but ultimately, we would be-
Going to 2044.
Till 2044.
Okay, thank you.
Who knows how many things will change in that amount of time. So in fairness, we thought that was fair for them to be able to open it up and discuss anything that came to their attention. The first year of this contract, 24-25, will remain the same. The tuition agreement will remain the same. And in 23-24, the capital fee will be eliminated. So there was, in addition to the tuition, there was a capital fee of which they paid relative to their contract. And so in 2024, that will be eliminated. Beginning in 2025, then the new tuition rate will be calculated for the total number of students attending.
And that will include, are we changing how we're calculating tuition rate? Are you getting to that?
Only, yeah. The only thing that we're going to change right now is the, in this section of it, under tuition rate, is that that capital fee- Jack, what was that number? Do you remember?
Yeah, it was about $470.
Yeah, I was going to say $500.
So I think we're at $535 times the number of kids. So it raised between $85 and $90 grand.
And why did we have it?
It was just because they don't contribute towards any debt. Like when we put that student gas in, they don't pay for any of that. It's all excluded.
So is it being essentially incorporated into the new rates?
No, because they pay, well, in a sense, because now you're looking at your, instead of a 10-year average, I think we're looking at a three- or a five-year average.
We're looking at a five-year average, so we'll look at the last five years. We'll get that average of tuition. In previous years, it was a 10-year average, which was obviously, the tuition rate would be smaller, right? But only using a five-year, our number will be greater. So in essence, Jack is, what Jack is saying is, in many ways, we have absorbed that by using a different formula for averaging, and only a five versus a 10. Does that make sense?
No, but I'll believe you.
Well, the 10-year would be, you know, you'd have a, you know, you'd have smaller numbers, so your average would be less than if you had a five.
That 10-year was including, you go back to the economic downturn, there were some lean years. And when you write that over, it impacted the tuition. Now you're looking at a shorter span.
I get it.
So we figured that would be better. And for them, when they have to put it, they have to go on the warrant article, tuition, capital fee, and it was a point of contention. Now they'll just have one number on there.
Okay, sounds fine.
The other number that you have to think about is the youngsters who may have learning plans, IEPs, special programs.
Aren't those paid for by the district?
Those will be paid, be paid by the district and over and above the baseline tuition. So you, you know that those costs will be added on to the final number.
Same with CRTC?
CRTC is rolled into their number, because their students at Concord High School. So they don't, like, we have charges for anyone outside, like, from the other nine sending schools, as you know. That would not play the same-
Well, in reality, they're not taking classes. They're replacing the classes that they were getting.
Exactly, exactly. And you know, that's been a really strength in the negotiations with Jim and with Pam, because that program is so valuable, and the community absolutely loves the program and the opportunities for the kids. So it was really, had great leverage, I think, in the negotiations.
Right, good.
Um, let's see. I just want to go on. I think the next, the rest of it is pretty, we did some changes in when the tuition payments were due from, to be paid before October 1st, instead of originally, I think it was September.
Yeah.
Never could make it.
Still need to know what, all the enrollments are still passing around, so.
So we changed the dates and stuff, so that wasn't, that was not any, any big deal for, for the folks at the table negotiating. I think the other big piece was on page six, you'll see it at the bottom. It's around student transportation, and that we may provide transportation of the Deerfield students to Concord High School. You know, it's been a real challenge for the Deerfield community. They use Dale Transportation System, and they have really struggled to get drivers and bus. We've helped them out on occasion. We've taken youngsters home, and they couldn't do that late run, you know, that late-night run. So we, we, we put this into the contract, and of course, the actual cost for that will not, will be in addition. I mean, we will come up with a number for the bus, the driver, the, you know, the fuel allocations and all that, to come up with a number for that transportation. We haven't decided that. We'll wait and see how that all plays out with them. But we did have that as part of the agreement.
I'm fine with that, as long as the word is "may."
Well, it's in there, and it says "may provide," right. I mean, we're struggling ourselves right now, just having enough drivers, so, and, so we can't make promises that we don't have the staff for.
Right. How many buses would we send out there? How many kids are we talking about?
I think we were talking about two.
Two buses.
Two buses.
I do think the other significant thing in the contract is not, is something that's not a change, which is that Deerfield continues to commit to sending 90% of its public school students to Concord High School.
And frankly, there's been a big, lots of discussion in Deerfield around choice. And, you know, the opportunity to go wherever. And in order to really facilitate this contract, know where we are in terms of providing for our students, knowing every year that we have enough classes and enough seats, that it was important that we know the number. And that's why the board really wanted that 90%.
I think we wanted predictability for our planning in terms of classes, but also, while knowing it could vary by a few students, predictability in our budgeting as well, that we'd, that we'll be getting that revenue on a regular basis.
I can understand.
That's great.
I understand that, but what about the other districts? Where else could these kids go?
They, I mean, I think that was, obviously, Deerfield's concern. They wanted a school of record, because, you know, pre their contract with Concord, they were sending students, students were applying and going to North Cog Brown, or here, or Pepper, but then sometimes students weren't getting in places. So it was really important to them to have a school of record. And we appreciated that, but if we want, going to be the school of record, we want it to be the school, and not, you know, some year getting 30% of the kids and some years getting 50%.
And, and I'm sorry, because I'm not on the committee of the regularity, but, so that 10% gives them some options? And that would be about how much?
They make the decision. So a parent would, you know, if a parent, a parent wanted to have a choice, they would have to, you know, petition the SAU office and present their case.
But it couldn't be more than 10%?
That's correct.
So we could take 100%?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think the other piece that was important, especially to the Deerfield Board and to us, was on page seven. And that had to do with all the outreach. It's sort of, I kind of think about that as marketing, so that Deerfield will now, will send us lists of students in grade seven, so that we can reach out and be proactive in helping those families in Deerfield understand our programs. Many of them didn't understand it, you know. And we had, Jim, you were there that night. We went to the board, and our students spoke about the opportunities. They were Deerfield students, speaking to the Deerfield Board, and the, and the, because the kids were, like, articulate and to the point. And I don't think people realized how much, how many opportunities the youngsters have. So we want to do, as Concord, we want to do a better job marketing the opportunity at the high school. Not only the core subjects, the co-curricula, the, the opportunities at the Career and Technical Center. So we'll do that, and, and reach out to the parents, and do some sessions, and inform them about the programs at the high school.
I think that was one of the key things that we don't realize, but a lot of, and I've read it in various statements too, from, from parents there, is they are, they're hesitant and concerned about sending their students to the big, huge school of Concord. And will their kids get lost? And is it dangerous? And, and many people have said, I was dead-set against it, and I was really anxious about it, until my kid went to Concord, and then I love it. They loved it, and I loved it too. And it's just a matter of a misconception, or I think much more prevalent is just, you know, no idea of what it will be like when they get to Concord. And when they get here, and the more we can show them of what it's like here, the, the more they're at ease, they feel. And so we're just going to help them, and, and help ourselves by doing that in this coming contract.
And we can't be off things to all people, and certainly, some people will want the smaller school for, for their reasons. I happen to know a little bit about smaller schools, so.
Which are very appropriate for some people, as you well know.
Well, no, Pepperick Academy is a smaller school. For some people, that makes them more comfortable.
And so the other piece is, is that we will have representatives at their school board meeting twice a year.
Great.
Right now, we've been doing once, but we'll have one in the fall and one in the spring. And we'll have representatives from the high school attend and share information about the programs at Concord High. And I think that will help with the connection between Deerfield and Concord.
And of course, we've always, we have open invitation for them to attend our meetings as well.
Which I thought went well last year, when we did that, and we sat with them. Other than that, I would say the rest of the contract really remains the same. Those were the salient points that, you know, were negotiated. And like I said, they're working on it. This will have to go, as you know, to their warrant article in March, for the community to vote on. So they're continuing to do an information with, with the community in preparation for their budget work, and then on to the ballot in March in Deerfield. Any other thoughts, questions?
What action do we need on this, Pam?
Do we need to recommend it to the full board?
I think that would be appropriate.
So can I have a motion to recommend this to the full board?
So moved.
And a second?
A second then?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm doing minutes, so hold on. So Bob moved, and second was Brenda.
Agenda, and all three of us voted for it.
You know, all right.
That's all right.
You and I just keep on.
And then we've just left Jack for our next item, which is the end of your fund
I know it, but I don't know what like-
I know. Give him a minute.
I'm going to go see if I can-
But I, you know, Superintendent, I very much enjoyed going to the Deerfield meeting, and, and I would agree with you, their, their students were, their students that attend Concord High were absolutely fantastic. We're happy to have them. They're a great asset.
They did a great job.
End of your fund balance?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda.
I changed it up a little bit.
Oh.
I didn't expect it to be a budget.
Is it a copy?
Yeah, it's in the, this is in the-
Shared with me?
I'll go back to the-
Okay, here we go. Oh, you, it's on a, it's on a power point, that's why. I'm not noticing it. All right, audit firm?
Okay. So last year was put out for bid, audit services. Been the same service for probably at least 12 years. We had wanted to do one more year because of all our changes, and they knew the way we work. That didn't work out too well. The people that left and were replaced, wound up getting replaced, and then most of the staff have changed.
At the, at the auditor?
Both here and there.
Yeah, okay.
So we tried, but anyway, when we did put it out for bid, we got one firm. And that firm was our current firm. So rather than entering to a three-year with an option for two, I had called the owner and asked that we just renew for one year, and we would put the proposal out again. They were completely understanding of that, because they had nothing to benchmark it against. And they kept the rate the same for another year, so.
And what is it, what is our rate?
$43,000. That's for the general fund, and then when you do the supplemental audits, that's bottom line. So this year, we're going to go out a little earlier, and try to get a little bit more exposure and see. There isn't, at least as I speak with Maureen, who's the new business manager, she came on in December, replacing the one that we hired in June. She's, working, worked for the city of Manchester. There isn't many Hampshire firms that are doing this work, and they seem to be consolidating. The other challenge we have is usually by now, and that's why I'm putting on here, unaudited, usually by now, we have a pretty solid where the numbers are. As far as they've, they agree with us. They're not, they've started preliminary work, it usually starts in July. They won't really get started until October.
They-
And that was the same reason why other firms did not apply. They didn't have the staff.
It won't get started in the audit till October?
So they said they'll be done by the-
That's late, but they'll make, will make our deadline still?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're submitting our Department GOE 25.
Yeah.
Because we have till March.
Okay.
So the thing that's still, I-
Have you talked to other districts? Anecdotally, I know other organizations I'm working with, there has been an awful lot of turnover in auditors, a lot of consolidation of firms. I don't know whether it's a generational thing, or what the heck is going on, but have other districts had similar issues?
We hear it on that, and legal, same thing.
Yeah.
We're hearing that from the Nargile firm. People just don't show up, sign up, make an interview, don't show up, or, yeah, it's-
Jack, what is the current firm?
Okay.
So what are your thoughts on going out and trying to get more interest? I mean, are you going to spread the net wider somehow?
Yeah, and, you know, I almost wonder if there's a way we can work with them to allow most of the work to be done remotely, in order to attract, like a Massachusetts firm, like, deliver more money. But, you know, with Melanson, up until this year, because they had the experience, they VPNed it. We would provide them with laptop, or we, our IT would work with their IT, and they would do a lot of legwork remote.
Yeah.
That's not happened this year, the staff that they're bringing in, so.
Meaning that they're spending more time physically here?
Yeah. Which doesn't change the rate, but, I mean, when I first got here, it was five days.
I would think they'd be trying to do the exact opposite.
Yeah.
And maybe, if they're more advanced, or, you know, hungry, we'll see. But that's one of the things I'm thinking. Because usually, we had them down to where they were remote three days, basically, and then two onsite. And we would just upload the files and pour them. This year, they're coming onsite.
We need to look in Massachusetts or Maine.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we ought to consider this.
It's a big gap, but all this turnover, it's worth, get a fresh set of eyes after all these years. Okay?
Yep.
All right. I'll move on to the 22 budget. And I think you have in front of you-
Jeff, Jeff, you don't need any vote from them, relative to the one-
No, tonight is more information, because we're still working with them, as I said. They started a little bit of work in August, in order, I wanted to feel comfortable enough to move the year-end fund, make sure the fund balance was, because that's the important number I need to carry forward. If things need to be reclassified, that we can work to do. But I'm more concerned that what we anticipate the year-end balance to be is the year-end balance. So that's, we've been solely working on that with them through this process, so.
Is there a handout for this?
Yeah, sorry. I need to make a call.
Are they over there?
I'm sorry, you need to have a-
Thank you.
Do you have one more?
Uh, no, but I'm fully clear. Well, I'll just watch from-
From sideline.
So this is summary I usually have done each year. It kind of shows you the saving shortfall from the budget versus where things actually came in. You have the present pool on the left, and the expenses on the right. You know, one of the other things that we did this year, that seems to be demanding more and more each year, is being able to start the summer projects earlier. So for example, we ordered all the equipment in May for July. So we had to put a prepay into the budget that we were expens, expense it next year, but we're buying it now, because based on supply chain issues, we would not have gotten the student and staff's equipment by the start of school. So we did that. And that's like the creates, on accounting things that, you know, they might get a little on me about, but we need to do it. And I do call them when I do this. And I'm like, okay, yep, we're classifying this, so.
Do you anticipate that we're actually going to have to go, from what I see, the supply chain, it may be more than a couple months to maybe 10 months, or, or more?
Yeah, those, yeah, because those screens we did this summer, we ordered in April. Right after you passed the budget, we gave the order to go verbal. And then once we open up the system in May, we say, right, here's the purchase order for, but we just wanted to be in the queue, so we wouldn't be in the back of the line. And what's good, some of the vendors, they do take credit cards, which is, they don't charge the state, which is great, and we can easily be made, so. One thing to highlight under the revenues and other, all those red numbers, is these are transfers that we did not do. So these were coming in to support the budget, and we didn't need to do that.
Oh, okay.
All right, that's why we didn't do that. The only ones that we did do to support is the Special Education Trust Fund, because notice how it says 500, and then only 116 was the amount we pulled out of there. That's because the, we were going to be short from the $2.4 million that we need, that you see in back of the order. The actual was $2,061,000 or whatever, around there. And that's where we pulled it, because that's where we're seeing the needs between nursing-
Transportation.
Transportation was big this year. We hit December, we had used about $161,000, $400,000, and then we were up to $800,000 with that, not getting any big drivers, transporting students, contracting out, reimbursing parents for bringing their kids to school, if they're fined, that's as a certain, yeah. So it ballooned pretty quick. So that's where we felt we could do it to mitigate, and at least get to what we need to carry forward. Obviously, when we get to 23 budget, we'll talk about some of those challenges that we're going to have this year, so. Any questions about this? And we'll go through this again in the early October meeting that we do, but we wanted to just give you a preliminary view. So far, things are rolling along. We're in good shape as it gone from 22 into 23. And we'll talk about some of the challenges in 23, and some of the positive things as it relates to some state money, although one-time money, that's going to be happening. We did some calculations for you, okay?
I think we've talked most, about most of the overages, but can you just give a brief summary of what was driving those?
Yep. So you have, anyone particular, or just a little bit on each?
I just think just a little bit on each would be helpful.
Yeah. So in the local, you have tuition, and that includes a lot of, stuff for CRTC. We definitely had a big increase in the number of students. This year, I think we're at 750, which is our highest ever, that's for 23. But last year, we were close to 700. So every one of those kids brings in dollars. And then we also had more Deerfield kids as well, and increased special ed costs that we had transported. So that would be in your $500,000. When you get into some of the transportation, some of that has to relate to ESER and 21C. We do a lot of after-school programs, and we're trying to bring back up with the learning loss and get the kids into social components of that. The other, I'll double-check. I don't remember that off the top of my head. And then the adequacy and differentiated special ed, that's a combination of those two. And the special ed charter, he was down a bit, so there wasn't as many students going to the charters as we did the year before. And then CATA is up significantly. I think we submitted close to 900,000. And, you know, we got 640, because they give you a percentage of a percentage. They don't give you your full entitlement. So there was significant, that was, that was good. And then the vote gate that came from the state was down a little bit. And then the vote fee, which is what all the sending districts pay, as it relates to the facility.
Why was that down if the number of students was up? Do they pay it on a per-student basis or per-district?
They pay it on a per-student basis.
Yeah.
But I want to guess that in that tuition, a majority of that was Deerfield. Then we get into the facilities and renovation trust, the other, which were all that transfers in to help the budget. Again, we used $383,000 of the 500. We didn't use any of the specialty, I'm sorry, the technology money. And we didn't bring in any of the building and maintenance, and we didn't bring in any of the, of fresh reserve. Indirect, we had an additional $92,000, because remember, we're charging indirect, which I think is 2.4% of all the grants. So we're hitting it on the ESER, so that's why that's a little elevated. And that's a lot of the work that Ellen has been doing since she got here, which is great. You see the amount to be raised in taxes, 64, 873. So when you pass your budget in October, that's what sets that number. And then we get into the salaries. We were, had a little bit savings of $983,000. Benefits, a little over $2 million.
And was that primarily vacancies, or just changes into newer staff members?
Primarily vacancies.
Vacancies, like, are- Vacancies, like a tutor and a assistant vacancies?
Yeah. The professional staff was pretty much, you know, most of that was all hired. But where you have in support areas, you know, bus driver, if you're an assistant, that's where it was a challenge. And then having to, you know, contract that out. Sometimes we move money out of those salary accounts to cover the contracts. The professional services, and this is where a lot of the contract work that we had to do for student services comes out of. You got the purchased property, we were pretty much dead on there. And then you get into purchase services as far as transportation and some of the, uh, out-of-district tuition. And then supplies, books and utilities, a lot of that was the natural gas and the, uh, the electric, which I think I mentioned in the note a couple weeks ago, that we locked in about 12.1 cents for electricity. I think they're anticipating the rates go up to 22 cents. So I had an opportunity to lock in for three years and with the current provider, we bit it out. So they bit it out, came in, and they were the worst. I called the person who we use, which is the same one the city uses, St. Paul's and Bo. And I should call them directly and say, if we want to stabilize, what can they do? They went right to number one. So we didn't have to make any changes and lock in for three years. Just at least some stability. Because there's no, with what's going on overseas and then the supply chain and trying to turn things up.
So the, so the change on it though is how much?
Uh, we're at 11 and a half cents. So we're like 0.06 cents or 0.06 cents increase.
You said 12.1?
Seven and a half. We went to 11 for a year and now we're up to 12.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Think natural gas is December. So her and I will be talking, I'm sure, within the next two, three weeks. So we can get that done.
Yeah, that'll be interesting too.
Yeah. And then, and then you have, um, uh, some equipment as it relates to building maintenance and things needed for kids and furniture. And then you have the dues, fees, interest and contingency. One of the things that I noticed in going through this is not all the contingency money got moved to the accounts. So that is something I'm gonna talk about because we still have the ability, I believe, even though we're down the fiscal year, to move the money. So these numbers may change. Because, and you have the bottom line, it's gonna stay the same, but it's a matter, it don't look as negative as it should because of the contingencies. Because it looks like, oh, you got an extra 300,000. Because the debt is the debt. We budget that to exactly what the bond schedule is. So it's not like there's gonna be savings there unless the state's giving us additional building aid or something. That's, that's it.
Jeff?
Um, and then you have the transfer to the vocational capital reserve and then transfer to any reserves that you had planned expense-wise. And if you remember last October, we had done a number of transfers with that additional adequacy money. So a lot of that is all spoken for at 3 million dollars. And so how we get to 2.4 million, we have FY '21. When we closed out, paid everything, we released the encumbrances. So that's the amount of purchase orders that we had allocated money to of 519,055. So that's cash that comes forward. Then you had excess revenue of 769,476, which you see over on the left side. And then you have savings and expenditures of about 1.1 million. You total that off, you get 2.4 million. Go down.
It's a nice round number.
Same number as last year?
No. Was it 2.4 or 2.1? It may have been 2.4. Yeah. I wanted to do 2.1 and we came in at 2,690,000. And then I had to use that trust to prop it up and get it to where we are. So...
Any additional questions? Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome. I kind of did a slide on the breakdown that I just explained, but it's there if you wanted to do that or go into it further. So I put in the slide where I talked about what we did, but in, uh, the board took action with that additional adequacy. And you can see those transfers in there on that, um, sheet that we did as far as what we were gonna have come in or go out. And then I wanted to give you an update on where your balances are right now as of the end of August, which is pretty good. I mean, you're, it's pretty healthy. That always helps for your bond rating. And when we do Moody's and S and P, that's a good, that's a good thing. And remember, these are funds that you control. So unless you vote, you don't touch this money. So I think ones I'll, I wanna highlight are the facilities purchasing renovation expendable trust fund, which has a little over 10 million dollars in it. So that's the fund we would use to run it and to stabilize the tax rate. Historically, that's what we've done with it. But you look at the special education expendable trust, that's got almost a million. These last couple of years, we've been trying to come to, when we do have excess money, to build that up in anticipation of, you know, post-COVID events plus for the future. Because we had lined these down during the, uh, during the economic downturn, had brought a number of these funds, except that facilities purchase renovation trust fund down. Now we're just trying to build that back up. You see your any risk reserve has about 340,000. Be nice to have a little bit more, but eh. And then the instructional trust fund has a little over a million. And that fund at one time had a little, maybe over a hundred thousand dollars. So really build these back up to put you in a healthy position to make some decisions. But I anticipate when you see me go through 23, that you might need to tap those for some one-off expenses. But that's your decision if you wanna do that or just do something with the tax rate.
This, and the transfer out of special education expendable trust of 383 is just an overage?
Yeah. So there were two things. We had 500 coming in to support the budget and 250 going in from adequacy. But I like tracking it. So I don't like blending them and netting them out. So the 383 is the amount that we needed of that 500. So if I go back to this slide, um, so I see the 250 right here. Oops, sorry. That's the amount that was going in. And then in the rep, and then when we passed your budget, you had 500 coming out to support the general fund budget because we were anticipating significant special ed costs. But because you, you may have had those, you had those expenses, but we didn't need all of it. There's no point in bringing out the whole 500 when all it's gonna do is lower the tax rate temporarily with one-shot money. We needed 383, 671 of the 500.
Okay. Thank you.
I will move on to something for the, for future discussion. So one of the side effects of post-COVID, I don't know what to call it right now, but, um, after two years of free lunches, um, the unaudited fund balance right now, we're showing us 1.2 million dollars, which is a significant amount of money for that food service program. Usually run a budget of about 1.8, 1.9, came in at 2.9. And remember, all the meals have been free the last few years. They also increased their reimbursement rates. So we've sold a significant number of meals. Um, one of the things, because we see food services so highly regulated, we called over there to find out, okay, can we do something with this extra money? And sure enough, there's a regulation. Um, and we're right now trying to figure out what to come to you to propose. One thing I would tell you we wouldn't mention that is to lower the food prices. One of the things we're thinking about is equipment that has probably been long, you know, just slumping along, using those funds if we can, or establishing a trust and slowly letting it out to support the program. Uh, I have gone, I've started going back to 2019 because that's the last, like, normal year, if you wanna call it that. I took 20, 21 and 22, and now we're 23. And we're gonna bring you and show you what those trends are. But I feel we're gonna be back to right where we are, where we start off every beginning of a normal year, very slow. And it's always hard to, to, to come back from that because now all the meals are being charged. But you're also gonna see participation less than when it was free. I'm sure that's what these numbers are gonna say. So I'm putting that together. We'll come to you and share that. Which when, where I'm going, that fund balance is gonna get eaten up over in a couple of years. So, but if they say we can only keep three months of expenditures, how do I keep something to the side? How do I manage it so I can float it for, you know, two or three years without?
Jack, um, you must have a process for replacing equipment, right? And, but you don't always know when some refrigerator grate is gonna blow up or, so to speak. But, but it still seems to me that you would wanna let that out over a period of time so that you don't get caught with people being either overly, um, you know, a big pocket, pocket of money to spend. If I gotta spend it, I might as well put it into here. It seems like...
Especially thoughtful about it.
The cost of supplies and... Right.
And now at lead times, yeah, we don't have to spend it or not. I mean, we've done some updates over the last couple of years, dishwasher, some other things. But there might be simple things that the children are looking for too. So we have not addressed this with them at all yet. Just as we're starting to put this together and the numbers are coming together, what's the right thing to do here? And we're gonna come, we're gonna come to you with some options.
So the, so the whole food insecurity thing is, is obviously a big concern issue. Um, it's not exactly good news that we know that less kids are gonna be eating lunches or breakfast or whatever it is. Um...
Do we...
Do we have any sense at all of what, what the state is thinking about this, gonna do about it? Probably, I, I suspect I know the answer to that. And is there anything we can do to do more?
What a conversation we had today.
Well, we just had that, we just had that conversation today.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, two things. We understand that some states have subsidized food and it remained at no cost for breakfast and for lunch. So that we know. That's one thing to think about. Um, the other...
Do districts in New Hampshire have any, um, flexibility to do any of that?
Well, um, you have the flexibility to do that. Jack and I talked about it. What, and my question to Jack today was, Jack, what would it cost us to fund lunches? Um, the lunch and breakfast meals for our kids? And so, um, you know, we know how much revenue it comes in. We know how much money, um, we get from the state to subsidize free and reduce. So we, we were somewhere around a million, two?
Million, a million, two.
Yeah. To, to subsidize lunches for all of our students, 4,000-plus students over the course of the year.
In your experience with the other superintendents, is there any interest in doing that in other districts?
I haven't, it's interesting. I have not heard a word. I mean, you know, people would really struggle knowing that that would be part of the budget. And we think that...
Sure.
But there are obviously other places that have high numbers of free, have free and reduced numbers, percentages of students who are eligible. And that makes a difference. But, um, for us, it would be somewhere between one and 1.2 million.
Yeah, okay.
I was just reading, um, that there's a big, there's a push for, um, the government, the federal government to pick this up on an ongoing, um, system because it was so beneficial to the kids that, during the last two years. Whether they'll be able to do that or not, I don't know. But we would see a bill, I'm assuming.
There is a bill, but it doesn't seem to be moving anywhere, anywhere quickly.
They put it on the table, they put any gas or anything elected to it.
And it comes out of the Department of Agriculture, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So they sort of...
It's a level billion dollars to, to fund that.
Per, per year.
So I think that it will be important for us to monitor what, what's happening in our schools. How, how many kids are, you know, free and reduced? We'll have that number, but based on the applications, we continue to push that. How many youngsters are paying? And try to evaluate that. Now, you know, I heard you say that people, you know, it would be kids who don't have lunch. Well, we make sure kids are eating. That's why you have supervision in the cafeteria and they're provided lunch. We're not letting kids go hungry. Um...
Okay. No, I appreciate that. But I mean, it's a...
We're gonna monitor.
It's an interesting issue that we, yeah, we definitely should monitor.
So the other challenge you have is the free and reduce number. They spider that in everything. It's tied to our NCC, it's tied to grant funding, our donor grant funding. So when you have free, what's the incentive for free and reduce? We can do all the education we want. It's hard.
I understand.
Um, we just did reflect that committee member Kate West joined us. Before we move on, because I know we have another thing, I think we should put this on a future agenda. I, I did wanna compliment you on the, that you transferred to a new vendor for school lunch payments. And my balance from two years ago showed up. I was pretty, I was pretty impressed by that. But wondering what, is the company returning the funds to families that are no longer in the district or who's, no longer have students? Do we know what happens to that balance for people who aren't enrolled anymore?
You have seniors, we automatically cut checks and send them home when they graduate.
Okay.
If it's somebody that left, and there's times where they've left...
Yeah.
And we have no forwarding address. We send out a check, comes back, none of it says, as of right now. So we'll find out from, I think we have to contact the AG's office to find out how we go about processing that, whether it has to go to the state or can the board take action with that money. But usually, it's, it's, it's either a request or it's because the kids left.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so one of the criticisms was that the program started late. I'm sure you heard some of that. And, and part of the reason was we were rolling over all the youngsters from the power school. That all had to be matched and to go back two years to see what people had in their accounts. So given that timeline, obviously Donna had hoped that it would be done a lot sooner because parents were, you know, saying, how come it, it reads zero? I know there's money in my youngster's account. So we apologize for the delay, but it's a much better project, product. Um, the, the site of which you can go to, the school lunch site, is really much more dynamic and has much, many more facets to it in terms of information. So, um, we apologize for being so a little delayed, waiting till, I think it was the weekend before school started, right? Um, but I, we do think it's a much better project for, uh, uh, product for our families.
No excuses, but following up on the theme of staffing, they also had lots of people for implementation.
Yeah.
They're all the people, the people we started out with, changing people. But it's the nature of the world right now.
My only comment on that is, and I think most parents appreciate that we switched to a better program. It's just that they would have liked to have known something, a little communication with regards to, you're not going to see, you're gonna see, your balance is gonna be gone, but don't worry, it's not really gone.
Yeah. And Donna and I talked about that. And, and it was just that, you know, the promise was, the promise was that it was gonna be done. And so she didn't want to alarm everybody, but then it didn't happen. So, um, again, we apologize for that. But thanks for that feedback.
How are we doing with signups for free and reduced lunch so far? I know it's very early.
It is early. I don't have that number. I haven't, we haven't really talked about that with, with, um, with Donna. You know, we did an effort over the Keach Park event. They had a lot of signups for that. So we keep doing that kind of work. I don't know the numbers yet, but I'm...
Are we at the back-to-school events for that exact same thing, advertising and telling people? Because we have a lot of those coming up in the next week or two weeks. And I think that would be an ideal place to, um, tell people, hey, be sure to sign up because it's very, very important, not only for free and reduced lunch, but for all of our Title I and Ag's adequacy programs.
I'll follow up with Donna in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we start with the, um, joint meeting with Capital Facilities, do we wanna talk a little bit about the changes in 20...
Sure.
23 budget?
Yeah.
I'm also wondering if this year, we could perhaps have the city assessor come into the finance committee in October. So before we get to the, we're discussing the budget. I know they met with the committee, the, no?
Oh, yes. Here's, here's the thing I was gonna bring up.
I mean, they met with the committee, the city council.
They retired.
Oh, so there's no city assessor.
On the 31st. So they're getting a new person too.
Okay.
So I was gonna highlight to you, I'm a little nervous about that. But that's why I'm like, okay, what format do you have? We have some other councils, but we can use our trust fund. But, you know, what are these numbers gonna come in at? So I'm more than willing to ask. They're new too. I don't even know who it is.
Okay. All right. I just thought, last year, when we were having the discussion, it would have been great to have had the finance... I just thought, last year, when we were having the discussion, it would have been great to have had the finance committee briefed on what the assessments were doing.
Well, we're gonna meet with, uh, Tom and Brian, so we, we'll, we'll ask that, okay? And see if we can make some arrangements.
So that is gonna be a highlight in here that I, I know, um, but we've hit that now. So I'll, I'll try to run through this. So two, two things that, that are important. Your fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth. So for this current budget, it's July one, twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. When we get the numbers in October, that's made up of April one, twenty-one to March thirty-one, twenty-two. That's what it's looking at as far as assessments. And that's the tax assessment here. And then it takes them from April all the way to October to finalize. So this is the budget that you passed, um, right here, back in, um, March, March twenty-ninth, I think it was. And this had an estimated tax increase based on a point nine one percent growth, uh, three point six eight percent between the local and the state. Some of the impacts that we're seeing, um, are additional need for some type of nursing services for students. We're gonna have the increased Medicaid, which has increased our M S B fees. There's continuing to be audit for, um, student services. There is a freshman orientation that has come, continued on, that was an ESER last year, that was not funded, but done in general fund this year. I talked about the instructional trust. There was a pilot done for, um, a foundations product, and that's continuing on. The instructional trust wasn't set up to take in that money, but they needed to purchase it to continue that program. And then there's some life safety items that we needed to discuss with you, but they'll save that again for a future discussion at a non-public section of, session of that meeting. Uh, we have some temporary staffing right now because we cannot fill the position with what's needed. And what, as far as you remember the maintenance, we added a hundred thousand dollars in contracted services for H V C, uh, H V A C and plumbing. We still have those salaries and those jobs open, no luck, um, as well as a hundred thousand. But, you know, when you're running over a million square feet, there's gonna be things that are gonna pop up. Buses and additional vans, we did not plan to replace any buses because we felt the tax rate was where it was and kind of scoot another year. But with the shortage of drivers, and maybe relooking at how we do it, should we be purchasing some buses or other vehicles? One of the things we look at, we have twenty-six big buses, twelve small buses, and of those, only one is non-C D L. All the other ones, you need a C D L license to drive. So, for me myself, for my kid, I am driving their kids that wacks at, at night. I've done that twice now. But it is a non-C D L bus, so I can do that. We were wondering whether we should create some flexibility for the district.
With more non-C D L buses?
Yeah. So, um, and then, um, an alternative middle school program. I think that's something that we discussed that, because, and is that instructional?
Instructional.
Yeah, how major is where that?
Did they talk to you about it today?
And then the legal accounts. We've been hit the last two months with significant expenses that I don't typically get, you know, this time of year. I'm worried about that part. Hey, thanks. You said we're recording, right? I can not lie yet.
Exactly.
Just wanted to confirm. We'll need you to go to five-thirty and get rid of whatever was before that, although I don't think anything, but anyway.
Right, exactly. The recording started at five-thirty, so there's nothing before five-thirty.
That works, thank you.
On, on the legal accounts question, um, anything particular regarding that?
Well, we've gotten some right to know, and some of that right to know has to be redacted. And when we do those redactions, it has to go to, you know, the legal firm did it.
So that's continuing?
And it, you know, it, they get expensive. And, um, so that was one of the areas. Um, of course, you know that we've had, um, significant negotiations.
Yeah.
Um, and other, you know, kind of, um, personnel issues that required additional support. So that's really where it went this year.
So, I just highlight the revenue, these are various programs, nothing that I'm gonna get into for this part, except we're gonna move over to the state, which is where the next slides will address as it relates to adequacy and one-time refund to employers for New Hampshire Retirement. And then on the federal side, you still have ESER, uh, which is.
But the last one expires in September of twenty-four. So, um, in the twenty-four budget, that's where you'll see that sunset, and also some Medicaid revenue. So, I wanna highlight the adequacy. So, uh, there was a session today at two o'clock, um, as it relates to a new, quote, extraordinary need grant. So, my interpretation of this is when they lowered that S W E P, which was the statewide education, property education tax, they took that, and now they've created now, uh, a grant that you are automatically enrolled in. We have to tell them by September thirtieth if we don't want it. And we have to develop an accountability plan that'll be due by one-nine-twenty-three in order to get the money. So this is very similar to the ESER fund money, where you had to create a plan. Based on listening to the Zoom call today, it sounds very similar to that. So they've released the form and everything that needs to be done. I wanna highlight, oop, sorry, let me go back. That we have in our budget fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight oh four, that we're, we had budgeted, because that's, they give you a preliminary number. And then state adequacy, when they published it, is sixteen million, four seventy-seven, four seventy-six oh six. Included in that is that five oh eight, five forty-two, which is our entitlement for that accountability plan. So, if we, we have to opt out in order to say we're not providing an accountability plan and not taking the money. If we're opting in, then you get the five oh eight, plus the difference between, that is the two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So when you combine the two, we're getting seven hundred and forty thousand more than we have in the budget, if we do the accountability plan. And my understanding is, the law is that it's in perpetuity. So this is something that every year will need to, uh, happen. That was their initial call. Now, just to highlight the comment, as I mentioned, if we're not interested in applying, we're not interested, we have to tell them by September thirtieth that we don't want it, and then you don't have to buy, so they, uh, you don't have to do the plan. And you're gonna have to appropriate this money, so you're gonna need to adjust the budget, but you're gonna need seven votes in the affirmative to do that. And they flat-out told us on there, the D O E is trying to figure out how to implement this grant, because this was just passed in July of twenty-two. So.
Jack, is this something that the grant team would work with, work on, doing if we decide to? Who, who would be responsible for this?
I think it'd be more than.
You know, yes, to answer your question, but with, but not until we had your input.
Right.
I mean, that's, you know, where do you, where, if you decide to take the grant, that where will, what are the areas that you, well, I mean, we'll offer some recommendations to you, but there may be some things that you all, as a board, wanna address. So, I think it's a combination, and then we, of course, we will present the plan. Once we develop the plan, we'll have a recommended plan, we'll bring back the plan to you for your approval. But, but, but we won't even write that until we've had a chance to have, like, an open discussion.
And do we know how involved this reporting is going to be?
Well, if it's anything like ESER grants, I mean, it was a lot of work, you know, and, um, I haven't seen the template yet. Jess, did they produce the template for you today? I haven't seen it, I ju, just got to us.
I put a snapshot of it here, but, yeah, and we can plop it in your folder, and it's on the website.
I'll have to go through it with, with Ellen, and we'll have, um, Ja, uh, John involved, and Kim, and we'll come up with some recommendations, but certainly you, you all wanna do that too. Where do you see us needing to address areas?
Even though there's an equation adequacy, there's an asterisk as far as that component because there's accountability tied to that five oh eight, it's not just your normal numbers.
Could this be tied to a building project?
Not, no, I, not that I, I mean, can you take the money and then use it for something else? I, I don't know.
Well, it's worth a shot, worth a question to ask them.
I'll, I'll be curious if they email the list of questions that were flying up the screen today. But anyway, so I think that's the big asterisk, is it's not really seven hundred and some thousand dollar increase. There's a component of that that needs to be dealt with, okay? So the next thing is the, uh, one-time employer contributions. So, um, New Hampshire Retirement is refunding under, uh, the House Bill one-two-two-one, employers seven and a half percent of their twenty-two contributions. So, they have not finalized anything, I just talked to them today. Nothing's, nothing's done, they're weeks away from that. We may see it in October. But obviously, this is something else that would need to be accounted for in your budget. But I did some, I had some quick calculations done. So in twenty-two, uh, general fund, we contributed seven point nine four nine million to, um, the pension system. That's both teacher and non-teacher. If you take all the funds, so that's grants, food service and everything, it's eight point six one nine million. And then, so I estimate the range of one-time money between five ninety-six and six forty-nine, if you take seven and a half percent of those numbers. Just my rough calculation, if I understand.
And while the legislature has expressed their desire that this be used for tax relief, it doesn't require it all be used in one year necessarily?
So, what the legislature has and what New Hampshire Retirement said.
And its desire, not necessarily enforceable.
Correct.
The way I read the statute.
Originally, this bill was to be in, they were gonna continue this. They wanted this to be a permanent lowering of it. And then, once it got through the process, it was changed to a one-shot, but they never took out lowering the tax. That's what was conveyed to them. So that would, to me, make sense, because one-time money is not a benefit for you. Okay?
So, for the next finance meeting, I think we're meeting in the beginning of October, it would be great to have sort of all of the expenses and revenues that we are projecting that we wanna discuss going into the final budget discussion.
That's why we wanted to kinda lay out tonight, get your thoughts, and just make a picture. Yeah, okay? And I probably won't know the final number, because they're saying not till October. But, we'll just do up twos like we normally do, and hopefully it comes in that way, alright? And then for the twenty-four budget, all I do, real quickly, just highlight that you have one collective bargaining agreement this year that'll kick in the next year. Um, New Hampshire Retirement has approved their rates and published them. So the teacher rate is gonna go from twenty-one oh two down to nineteen point six four, or about a six point five seven percent decrease. The non-teacher will go from fourteen oh six to thirteen point five three, about a three point seven seven percent decrease. Taking this current budget, we estimate if we apply these rates for this twenty-three budget, be about an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar savings. Okay? And then, obviously, the other things would be factored in, in twenty-four, the, the budget, the, um, commercial and residential real estate growth as far as on the city side, and then you have the county side, and what's our post-pandemic impacts, um, as we come out of this. And then obviously, the New Hampshire Retirement rates kick in, and then there'll be a biannual budget, right, that kicks in for F Y twenty-four? So, and then the sunset of ESER funds on the federal side.
Thank you, Jack. Um, does anyone have any final questions before we move to the joint meeting with capital facilities for a few minutes?
Well, there's only one thing that I would like some direction on from this committee is, is that Jack and I have been talking about, how do we take all of this information and bring it to you? So you have a, a, an over, an oversight of the budget, and where the expenditures are on a monthly basis, or it could be monthly, quarterly, trimester, I, I'm not sure. I'd like to know what you would, how you would like to see it. Do you wanna see it once a month? Do you wanna see it on a quarterly basis? But it would be expenditures, encumbrances, what, what's left in the budget, what's the percentage? That, just that general information. And here's an example, I mean, we, Jack does this, it's in real time. I mean, he literally goes on to the Excel spreadsheet.
So I built this when I came here, my background was in I T. So watch, when I hit, oop, sorry.
Can you go back to the budget?
Now I'm realizing I kicked out, I wanna hit duplicate, sorry.
There you go.
So I know it's a little small, but you're gonna see some numbers jingle around. So this is linked directly to our financial system. All I do, this is how I manage the budget, uh, each of the funds. See all the numbers dance? Boom. As of six thirty-seven, that's the financials. And this shows you all the salary lines. When I say all the salary lines, that's summed up. If I were to take one of them and break it out, there's a lot more account lines in there, okay? So, but this shows you all the main objects, salaries, benefits, professional services, purchase services, supplies, dues and fees, and then I get into the revenues. And the bottom line is, the budget you passed was ninety-six million, three sixteen, four oh five, and that ties out directly. But I just go into this every day, get refreshed, and I always have the latest and greatest. And then if I wanna see food service, I just pull it down and I hit food service. And it shows me where food service sits, so.
Personally, I, I think a comparative budget to actual on a quarterly basis is probably the way to go.
Yeah, I agree.
I just drag the column and it's done.
That just gives us an idea about how to present it to you. Do you wanna do it at, through the finance committee?
I, I think we should, and then if we can supply a report to the, or in the minutes to the entire board, it would be great.
If there's something that's significant.
That, that's what, that's a direction I wanted to, to hear. Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
Programming should, you know, drive the budgets, you know, what are we doing for our kids, right? You, you must all be concerned about the ESER funds evaporating. And are, are there services that we provide during that time are gonna be an expectation? And, and my thing I wonder about is also, you know, how are we scrutinizing our programs? Which ones are becoming more obsolete? Boom, you have to make some choices here, and we have a lot of money, just a lot of money.
Right, we already.
And is there, is there a built-in sort of, uh, way of judging those sort of things? By looking at numbers, by looking at satisfaction, et cetera, et cetera? I know I'm asking a lot, but I mean, those questions.
Those are the questions we've had in discussion. I think you guys are listening to our conversations during the day. That was another conversation, because we know ESER's leaving.
Right.
There's, um, millions and millions of dollars involved in it. Um, so we, we wanna know, what does the data show us that the program was effective, number one? And what areas can we say they, it accomplished what we wanted to do? For instance, we brought extra personnel in because we were worried about first and second graders coming in? Well, the, you know, they're back into preschool programs if, if there are any available, any seats available. But, so we have less of the trauma, if you will, kids coming back.
Right, right, right.
So, that might be an area that we wanna reduce. That we didn't, we did it during COVID, but we, we can drop it. That, that's the kind of discussions we're having now.
Is that also done systematically with, uh, other programs that we're, the other program?
Well, we're talking with principals and looking at what, what programs do they service?
Right. And sometimes things can be consolidated, moved around.
Yeah, I mean, we have to look at it, we, we added some special education teachers because we were concerned about providing services. Can we reduce that, or is that something that needs to stay? That's the kind of thing wrestling with right now. Yeah, that you, you, you've got that right.
It was hidden by my bottom thing, but what stays, what goes, and the ESER funds, that's what I had in there. It was just hidden on that box, because I expanded, but anyway, to your point. Alright, that is that, and then, um, I'm gonna move just right to the meeting, because I'll repeat this in the next one, but the upcoming meetings.
Do we need to adjourn finance, then re-adjourn? So do I have a motion to?
Removed.
I'll second the motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we're to move into a finance and capital facilities committee meeting?